Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lazaro.
Eric Alderman Shockey.
Alderman Sizmarzki. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Coram President, please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to approve the minutes of City Council meeting June 21st, 2012. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, communications and petitions. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Not on the agenda. Okay. Oh, no, that's on the agenda. That is on the agenda. It'll be fast. Let the minutes reflect Alderman Sizmarzki's here. Okay. I have a few... Oh, we have somebody else? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, step to the podium, state your name, please.
My name is Anita Field, and I just had a question regarding the billing...
Excuse me, please. Can we have your address?
Yes, 344 Itasca Street.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm here at my own behest, as well as one of my tenants. One of my tenants called and said, gee, we're from a different state, and they thought that the cost for the sewer bill was a little high. My house and this house have wells. And so, you know, I actually came in and spoke with someone at City Hall and questioned how you got the flat rate that you got, and they did explain it to me as best they could, that it was figured for two people in a house and so many gallons, you know, per person. Now, I have another rental house across the street from me, and at times, there are three people living in that house, and sometimes their sewer bill is a little bit less than mine. So, you know, my question basically was, can we not meter the house on the side of the water softener? It just seems, you know, if, let's say, I'm out of town or something for two weeks, and I'm not even in the house, and I get back, and it just seems to me that the price of $42.78 is a little bit higher than I would hope it would be. Is it possible to do meters? I also accidentally ran into Joe Sorincioni, who's a very good friend of mine, and Joe did say that there were companies in DuPage County that did meters for this kind of situation, and I just wanted your response to see if you could, you know, explain a possible solution to actually metering the actual water that goes through the sewer pipe instead of just making, you know, a calculated estimate.
Okay. I would say I have to speak to the Finance Director, and if it has to be an agenda item, then it would come up. Brad, Brad Wilson's right there as our Finance Director.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak to him, either now or after the meeting.
Okay, so perhaps it can be looked into?
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? On matters not listed on the agenda?
I don't know what's on the agenda. I want to talk about ComEd.
Me too.
Okay.
Okay.
If you go to the podium and state your name and address?
Oh, go ahead. Alderman Wesley, want to make a comment before she speaks?
Could I just make a comment first? Yes, we did have, in our fourth ward, we did lose power again.
Again and again.
And I totally understand. I, you know what? Mike got a phone call at 12:30 last night, and there was a phone call at my house at 3:00 in the morning. Okay? I'm not sticking up for ComEd, I'm not sticking up for anyone. We do have an issue there, no doubt about it. And I'm upset as much as everyone else is in this thing. I was on the phone with the mayor, I was on the phone with Jeff, it needs to be addressed, no doubt about it.
So my point is, what are we going to do?
When I get a phone call at 3:00 in the morning, everyone must think I'm a lachrygeon because they think they're going to do the power. I really do, you know, it affects my ward totally, okay? Because there's been times that other areas in that ward is out, you could spit over where I live, and I lose power on that street. So, we are working to issue with ComEd, but I, I'm glad you came to voice your opinion tonight because we want to hear from you guys, no doubt about it. But we have problems in our ward. We know we do. Okay? It just seems like every time we go out...
And my question is, what are we going to do about it?
And my question is that we are going, try to get a hold of ComEd and line up a meeting. We are in the process of lining up a meeting with State Legislators, Skip Salviano, Dennis Rubellotti, and ComEd. If we don't get any satisfaction to, from them, we got a major problem.
Are you aware?
Because those are state reps.
Are you aware that we had them here once before? Mm-hmm. I've got it on tape. The whole meeting.
Can we have your name and address, please?
Okay, go ahead.
Pardon, my name and address?
Yes.
I'm Elizabeth Isbell. I'm at 305 North Ash.
I did not know that they'd been here on that...
Oh, yes.
ComEd?
What? ComEd was here.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but not, not our state rep.
Oh, no. I have it, no, the state rep, I don't remember him being here, no.
What I, we are doing is, we aren't going right to ComEd now. We are involving our state reps that are involved in our community, which is Skip Salviano and Dennis Rubellotti. They may have more pull than we got at this council level with ComEd because they do a lot of stuff with the state. I'm not saying that that's going to be the godsend, but we are working on to get that resolved somehow.
Yeah, because two power failures a year is nothing. I mean, transformer fires, and why are we connected to Bensonville?
That's my concern too. So, you could adjust your opinion to, I just want to throw that out there.
No, that's, that's my opinion in a nutshell. Seriously, I'm tired of the power failures, and I wanted something done, you know? I don't know how many other people are here. Would you like to say something?
Somebody else want to speak?
I've been here 36.
One at a time, we have to go to the podium, please. State your name and address.
Joe Patralla, Joe Patralla, 300 North Cattelpa. I'm in the same boat as many of you are here, too. Last, I was over to 4th of July for four days. But I do want to compliment a few people in this room. Most importantly, I want to compliment Mike Sizmarzki. Mike was there, yep. We lost power, I was out of town that Sunday, and we got back in, and Mike responded and returned my phone calls each and every day, and I probably borderline harassed him. I do want to thank Nunzio because Wednesday night, or Tuesday night, the 3rd, my neighbors and I were sitting in our yards, walking up and down the street, and I just decided to call Nunzio. He answered the phone and said that some of your constituents on Cattelpa Avenue would like to see you, and he was there in 20 minutes. So I want to thank you for that. And then Eugene also showed up that one evening when we had a little more activity than we expected from, from ComEd. But I will, I will second or third what many people say. ComEd seems to be doing but nothing but making promises to us. And I know we're a small community, but I think we need to raise our voice and speak loud and clear to them.
Thank you. Somebody else? Okay.
I'm Jessica Davis, 460 Itasca Street, and this is my first meeting I'm coming to, so I apologize if I don't get the routine or the timing right. But I do want to speak about the ComEd. I met Michael recently, very, very nice guy. We had a very good chat, and I spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, on the telephone during this last power outage. Interestingly enough, I just kind of wanted to update everyone that last year, when we were having those storms, and you live across the street from me, so you know where I live. So, nice to meet you as well. I'm kind of a person that I'm really quiet until I finally have had enough, and then I just come out of nowhere, like, poof. So, anyway, with that being said, last year, when I had to run my generator three times after those storms, and calling ComEd, I never did go through Wooddale, but calling ComEd, I didn't realize, but they actually opened up a ticket to investigate the power outages and what's going on with the lines in our area. Of course, on this last storm, I even had the mayor on the phone. They were giving us nothing but fluff on the phone, but come to find out, there was a ticket open, and no one had, actually did any activity on it, except somebody, I think, opened up the ticket and saved it again in December. With that being said, this evening, I just want to head and forward it an email to you, Mr. Mayor, and to you as well. It's actually a voicemail from ComEd. Surprisingly enough, this ticket that I had for outages, I asked the lady on the phone, and she said, it's only by house, per person, per resident, and my ticket finally gets addressed. I don't know what the argument is between Wooddale and ComEd as it comes towards the power lines or pertaining to the power lines and the trees, but ComEd did reply back to me and leave a voicemail, which they have, indicating that the trees are too close to the power lines. And I think the argument is, who cuts what? Who cuts this? Who cuts that? Well, surprisingly, the answer in the voicemail is, oh, ComEd does it, and we do it X amount of years, and you're up for another trim. So, I don't know if this is something that all of us need to call and start having this frequent outage ticket put in, but the gentleman said, if you see the ComEd truck coming around, that's us, we have your ticket open, it's time, you know, we cut the tree branches down, I think it's like every five to 10 years, they'll actually make an effort to do that. But I'm on the same grid that if a kid rides their bike too fast past a pole, the wind will take the, take the power out, and you live across the street from me, so you get power 24 hours before I am going to see my power, and I get the text messages from ComEd that tells me my power's on when it's just my neighbors across the street. So, it's really frustrating. I've called, I've gotten hung up on several times, and again, you know, I'm a nice person until I've had enough. And it's unfortunate that we have to, to deal with this type of stuff, but anything that, you know, we can do as citizens for Wooddale, I'm willing to be involved because my time is valuable and as well as everyone else. Let me not offend anybody, but we, you know, we don't have time to chase after a company that, you know, has enough, enough people to handle this, and whoever your rep was last time was a joke. I don't know who she was, but when I heard about possibly her turning off the phone, that kind of, you know, amazed me. So, the only other thing I can think of is to call ComEd and tell them that maybe you have some medical devices that need power. But I didn't say that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. On a quick note, anyone affected by ComEd outages should call the police non-emergency phone number so that the city has a record of the extent of the outages to help make a case against ComEd. 766-2060. Oh, right, the non-emergency. Pat, did you want to say something on that? We've also looked into a possible lawsuit against ComEd, and the attorney will explain it.
Do I have to get my name again?
No.
There was a community, and one of the reasons it's important to make a record of the calls, and it, that doesn't ensure that ComEd's going to come out and, and respond to it, but what it does is it gives the city the information necessary to be able to make a claim. The city had contemplated at one time, when we had all those outages last year, or a year and a half ago, whatever it was, the possibility, and we, they'd asked if I could look into whether or not the city would have any legal recourse against ComEd so that it's, the citizens of Wooddale were not impacted and something could be done. Another community tried that, and they were unsuccessful, and the court said they were unsuccessful because they couldn't document these outages without bringing the whole community into court to testify. They said if they had some documentation about that, they, the court may have come to a different conclusion. And at the time, because people get frustrated, and you just sit back and you think, well, it'll come on eventually, and you take your generators or whatever, that doesn't help the city make its case against ComEd, so it's really important to do that in order to give the city at least the possibility, one, of going before ComEd and saying, hey, this is the, the nature and extent of the problems we're having here in Wooddale over and over and over again, and it also may, I can assure that, but may give the city the possibility of recourse down the line if, if we have enough of those. So, that is important, to call the non-emergency number, make a record of the, of the outages to give the city the ability to make that argument to ComEd collectively on your behalf.
My problem with calling the city is that I have called the city, and I've, I've gotten a lot of officials in different capacities to be not so nice. I really don't like being smirked on the phone and talked down to, and that's the bottom line. The, the one that we had two years ago, I couldn't get anybody, and I mean, when I call the non-emergency police department, I get, we don't know any more than you do, lady. You know? I really don't need that. I really don't need that, especially when I am in heat, 98 degrees outside and 91 in my house. So I guess what I'm saying is, can the officials be a little nicer toward us?
The chief is sitting right behind you, and I'm sure he's taking notes on that, and...
And if I could address that really quickly, no matter what the situation, if there's an issue with how someone's treated on the phone, those phone calls are recorded, and we would certainly follow up on that if we're aware that there's an issue. We really do...
You're aware, but how do you make it look real?
Well, we also do quality checks of our phone calls, but it's virtually impossible for us to monitor every single phone call, because if there's going to be a power outage and 1,500 people calling in, that's going to cause an issue, there's got to be a way to document it. But ComEd does not give us restore times. The only times we get estimates on initially, longer term, maybe we get something, the only time we get special estimates of when they're going to be out is if there's a life safety issue. Beyond that, they don't tell us more than they, than they tell you guys. So, if you did get a message that, that we don't know, sometimes in an initial power outage, we don't, it's how we convey the message, you know? And if there's an issue with how we convey the message, we will certainly address that, believe me. We don't tolerate rudeness, and if it happens and we're aware of it, we will take action. So if that happened, do I apologize, but we do, we do record all those phone calls, and we would certainly look into it if there's an issue, so...
All my calls, I've only had one radio back to you.
Okay. Well, sorry about that. All right.
And the manager would like to make a comment.
I just, I have a question for, for the residents that are here today. I'm assuming a lot of you are in Ward 4. Is that correct? I know we have two problems, obviously, of the power outages with, related with storms, but I know that you guys also have power outages just on a clear blue-sky day. My question is, are you guys, I know your power goes out, but is each one of you individually, specifically, calling in your outage every time? Every time? Okay.
Can I answer that?
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Calling it into ComEd, not the city. You're calling into ComEd every time.
Carol Fitzpatrick, 337 North Edgewood. In the 29 years that my husband and I have lived in our home, we have contacted ComEd on every single occasion that we've been home and we've lost power. We have a landline specifically in one of our bedrooms that we use just to be able to have access to a telephone while the power's out, because most of our phones are either cellular or they're the digital type, where you, you know, you lose power, you lose your phone. I would like to make a proposal to the council that the council and the two members of Ward, the fourth ward, participate with some designated people from our ward to be able to get a proper history of what's happened in the past and formulate a task group from the community to be able to move forward and support what we like to do, you know, in the future. I'll volunteer. I have some history. I've called the 2060 number. I've called to see if maybe it's a transformer, maybe it's just our neighborhood, maybe it's just my house. In that, in those instances, I think that I've taken all these possible steps to be able to support somebody supporting me. Now I need your help, and I'm willing to volunteer.
The manager's going to...
I mean, I'd, I'd like to take it upon myself, I've had several meetings with ComEd over the past year, probably five or six meetings. I know some elected officials have been part of those meetings. We have made some progress, obviously not enough. We, to be quite blunt, we do get a lot of lip service from them, and I'd like to invite every resident who's had trouble with ComEd, you know, specifically in the Ward 4 area, call my direct office line, 630-787-3713. Call me this week, call me next week, we'll all get together, I will call you back, each individually, we'll sort this out. I'm going to need every single one of your, you know, your help on this. The more people that call me and the more people that get involved in this, the better, because when I do talk to ComEd, they do say that, oh, well, you know what, we didn't really record that outage in that area at that time, what's the specific address? Nobody's called that in.
They cannot say that anymore. We've signed up for the computer, we're texting, we have access to their outage map site. We, it goes specifically to the, to the house that logs the calls.
But, but I don't trust them, I trust me, so if you can give me the information, that would be better.
I don't trust, I don't trust them either, but I want to give them the benefit of the doubt. Get me a specific person with ComEd that we can work with. They have computers. Historical data will tell us exactly which addresses have had the most outages in that particular geography. There's stats that we could run to be able to support us.
You would, you would think they do, but like I said, I would trust me instead of them, and I would implore you to call me at my number.
I'm more than happy to make a third, fourth, or fifth phone call if that's what it takes.
And then I will be, you know, your delegate with ComEd, we'll work on it together, but I wouldn't rely on just you contacting ComEd, because if we all work together on this, I think we have a much better chance of solving the issue.
Okay.
So again, I implore everybody at home who's watching, 630-787-3713. It's my direct line, and all of you that are here today, give me a call, and we'll work this out.
Thank you.
Alderman Ray Wesley? Go ahead.
I'm not going to stick up for ComEd here because I had my own problems with them. But let me go into details a little bit how the city works with ComEd, and then you have the state reps that work with ComEd. The city has a rep, and that's who we go to. That's our line. The next step is to state senators and the state, state reps. They have a lot higher position to go to. They're the ones that vote on these grids and stuff like that. I encourage the residents to call Dennis Rubellotti and Skip Salviano, too, because they're the ones that's going to go higher up over the state reps. And I have a prob, we have to address this now because we have businesses that are losing insurance because their power goes out, and they have to go out and buy new insurance. So, and that's going to cost the business more money, and it's not fair to the business, it's not fair to our residents, it's not fair to anyone that they got to pay more money. So, I also encourage you to call Skip and Dennis. I don't have a problem going directly to Dennis and Skip Salviano if, if Alderman Wesley would like to go with me on that and go meet with them personally, I would appreciate that. And I'll also go to some, our state Senator Carol Pankow, too.
My question is...
You have to go to the podium.
My question is, where on Bensonville's grid, does it make a difference because you're talking about Wooddale?
As, as I talk with state reps and state senators, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
They vote on the grid.
Okay.
And they give to ComEd. So, it doesn't matter who, it could be Michael Madigan, I don't care, long, as they get to the top of ComEd, best to go.
Well, I just don't want to be talking to somebody and it's not their district, whatever, you know?
We, we're all supposed to work together, Republicans, Democrats, and when it comes to citizens, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat, you're the voters, and they're there to represent you, and we're here to represent you.
Okay.
Let me tell you, we're doing our best. I've dealt with ComEd with my own personal problem, I've contacted the rep, I think ComEd is a joke, but we don't have any other choice. We just got to deal with it and just keep on fighting. So, that's, but you can't do it by yourself.
No.
We need a group, and that's the only way. So, again, I encourage, help the businesses because they're losing money, too, and we want them to stay here.
Right.
So, and we want you to stay here, and we want, want you to have power. So, by you calling them, the state reps, and us calling them, they're going to get the message because they want to stay there. So...
On that note, we've already spoken to Representative Rubellotti last week with Alderman Eugene Wesley. The manager has already reached out to both Dennis Rubellotti and Skip Salviano, trying to hook up a meeting and get that ball rolling. It's already in the process because we're, we're not happy, but you could definitely email both, both those reps. Skip is not our rep at this present time, but he will be, especially in Ward 4, in your area where you're having all the issues. He will be your new rep.
Is that meeting an open forum? Or is it a closed-door meeting?
Well, we're thinking about bringing in ComEd, like a town hall meeting, and have the residents there.
Thank you.
That's, because we talked to Dennis, who, I shouldn't say, Representative Rubellotti, I shouldn't call him, sorry, don't want to disrespect him. And he goes, well, if you guys are just going to have a town hall meeting, and all you're going to do is hammer ComEd to the wall, we're not going to get anything done. Goes, let's have a meeting, let's sit down, let's come up with a strategy, then you want to bring in some residents, let them make their comments, and that's where we're at right now. And we're waiting, actually, for the, both representatives to call back, and the manager, go ahead.
And one other thing, I want to remind everybody, I mean, we've, we've met with ComEd, like I said, numerous times, and I know your, your power has gone out in the past, and I know you're upset about it, I would be upset as well, but moving forward, what's really going to help us, and I mean really going to help us, I know it's a pain, but mark down if your power goes out for a minute on a sunny day. Power went out, June 15th, 2:00 PM, mark it down. You have to, or else they will just, they'll be, oh, we don't have a record of that, our system doesn't keep records of things, of outages a minute or less. If you don't mark it down, and we can't consolidate the information, nothing's going to happen, trust me.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead.
Two more things. I, I do want to thank the council for the program that you instituted regarding reimbursement for generators. I did buy a new generator Monday after the power outage, and with that in mind, there's probably thousands upon thousands of dollars of generators running in the fourth ward, and I do want to thank the chief because I personally did see a greater police presence up and, up and down the fourth ward when it was pitch black, and we all had our generators running, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I've noticed, I've noticed of late that, again, the interruption is greater because of the drain. I have one of those Bulldog, you know, sump pump backups, and there are just momentary outages because it sets the, this sensor on, and that's been really happening a lot. And also, even today, I went up to my air handler and looked at the filter. I feel actually as though my two air conditioning systems aren't really putting out, and they're relatively new, and I, you know, and my thought, you know, and I didn't come to the meeting to talk about this, but it, I believe that the power that they are putting out to us is so much less that our appliances aren't even working, and I know that you can definitely burn up motors and things when you are not actually getting the proper power that you should be getting, and, you know, so that was just a, a thought. And then I wanted to ask that, there are other towns I read about in the newspapers that just threw out ComEd and hired another company. Is that something that the council and its citizens have talked about, just, you know, contacting another power company and, and firing ComEd, because other communities have done that?
Mr. Murmice?
We, the city of Wooddale actually does that. I mean, the bottom line is the power's still distributed through ComEd.
Okay.
It's called electrical aggregation. We do participate in that.
I see.
So we, we were actually one of the first ones to do that.
I just didn't know where the rates going down, though. It's, okay, thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
If something happens that you cannot get in contact with the city manager, more than welcome to call me on my cell phone. My phone number is, is, is listed on the website and everything else, but I will be more than happy to give that. If you leave me a message, I have been keeping a master list for some time. I did have that meeting with ComEd and city manager and voiced that concern last time. So my, my direct line to my cell phone is area code 630-373-3114. And I... And I, I will return the calls within 24 hours after I receive them. And I'm sure Mike will get the phone calls through. But we, believe me, I, I'm upset as much as you are. I was yelling at the mayor today because Edgewood was out again. I mean, I'm sorry, but enough is enough for our ward and it needs to be addressed. And, and I'm, I'm ready to go to the carpool room. If they were here today, I would be lynching them right now. That's how upset I am. And I, I'm telling you, we are going to resolve this one way or another. And now that we might be taking legal action on down the line, that might be the option we have to go. And I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, you have to go back up to the microphone.
I definitely believe that they are flipping power on us. I know for a fact that during the day when I'm home, all of a sudden I see a flip and there's a buzz-like thing and then all of a sudden it happens. I often wondered about that. Because years ago, they asked you to, um, during the day when they're running air conditioners, they asked you if it was all right for them to take it and turn it down. I said no, but they're still doing it. So I really do believe that. And I know that my air is not outputting what it should be. And I turned it down during the day on top of it when I'm not home, so. I don't think it's fair to the residents and I really think we, we really need to do something. I have documented, by the way.
Thank you. Gus?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Gus Francis from Christie's Restaurant, 200 East Irving Park Road. July the seventeenth, I'm in business in Wood Dale for 28 years. And all these years, the only problem that I had with my insurance was ComEd. And Mayor, I'm sure you know, you were in business and so everybody else. The last three, four years, like three years ago, Father's Day weekend, I was out for three days.
Right.
I claimed all this time, I claimed only four, four times to my insurance. And I just received a cancellation note from them because of ComEd. And last year, we had a meeting with ComEd and I was here last, last year. What they told us was that there is no money to do anything. They have no money, they said. In the meantime, my insurance told me, he says, we know you do, you're okay. I mean, the claim is legit, but we don't want you because you're in their own grid. The grid is no good and we don't want you here. So now I gotta look for another insurance, I gotta pay more money. And, and, and it's not only me, I'm sure it's for everybody here and it's really a problem. And what they said is they have no money to do anything. So I don't know if that's a true statement, but that's what they told us. Now, they gotta find the money to fix it, I mean.
Well, they just received the two and a half percent increase, which is supposed to be for infrastructure.
It's not enough for them, they need more, obviously. So, thank you, but I just wanted to let you know.
Is there anybody else on that matter? Okay, any other items before we go on? Go ahead.
Now, one thing I'd like to bring up is, uh, on my block, Jessica Davis, 460 Itasca Street is, um, the number of break-ins in the area. And, um, the fact that Itasca Street doesn't seem to have streetlights. And I know that would probably suck up more ComEd power, but, you know, it's pitch black on my street after 10 o'clock. Uh, it would be nice to have some flipping streetlights. I feel like I'm in the sticks.
I could answer that. We do have in the budget, if residents wish a streetlight to be on their block, need to run a petition, it can notify your alderman, they can help you out. Run the petition and there has to be a host family or, not family, but who would say, okay, it's okay in front of my house. And if you get more than 50%, and basically you only technically have to go four houses or three houses either way.
But that's amazing that we would have to do that and that should be part of our city.
Well, some.
Isn't that a good idea to have lights in our city?
Some areas that people don't want them and then, then how come you're putting it in? We don't want it. So make sure we have the people's signatures, they sign off, we have it in the budget. And that can be taken care of right away.
Okay, because we don't even have one. I mean, seriously, my only light is my flashlight when I go outside.
Right, I could tell, I could pretty much tell you why we don't have any lights down. It's Pine Street doesn't come through to Itasca nor, neither does, uh, Poplar. So there, there would be a streetlight there on the corner if Pine would come all the way through, which it doesn't. So.
Okay.
Alderman Coles?
You talk about streetlights?
Yes, sir.
I lived on Montclair for 40 years. It took us 10 years to get one light. All right, now.
You got us beat.
Wait a minute. We had, supposed to have two lights on there, but we couldn't find anybody on the block that would put the light in front of their house.
Wow.
I said, put it in front of my house, and you know what they told me? I'm too close to the curb, the turn in the street because there's one in the turn, so I can't have it there. It has to be further on. So we have one street and it's really dark. I mean, it's way at the end of the block, not near anyways. So you go out, walk your dog at night, I'm next to a forest preserve, so there's no lights at all in the forest preserve. No lights for the house across the street from me. So it's dark all the time and in the winter time, you can't see nothing. You get tied up with the animals that come out of the woods, which they do. And, uh, uh, can't find nobody to put a light in. So that's what, what trouble you're going to have. Nobody wants a light in front of their house.
Okay, well, I thought I'd bring it up because, I mean, it's.
I would say.
Yeah, no, I, it's just, you know, I don't have time to do city work. I mean, I, I'm a busy IT person working for Microsoft.
Say you want the streetlight in front of your house.
That's fine, I mean, but I, you know.
Help her out?
Trip, propping down, up and down the street, getting signatures, it's, I don't think anybody would really be against it. But, you know, to me, it's a security concern in some respect because we have these crazy kids running around. I mean, I watch the police reports that do come out, uh, you know, and they're nearby. And, um, you know, we know who some of the kids that are around there doing truancy stuff, so. Um, anyway, I just thought so that I would bring that up. But again, I have a feeling that it'd affect ComEd as well.
I'll make sure.
Maybe if we get the light, then maybe ComEd will come out and fix the grid to put the light up.
I'll make sure I get the petition for you and we'll walk the ward together and.
Thank you, sir.
Give it a sign.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Anything further? All right. Next, Holy Ghost Knights of Columbus, it's, uh, Tootsie Roll Drive. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in September, 14th, 15th, and 16th. They're asking for permission. Put that in the records. I have, uh, Wood Dale Swim Team is asking for a $500 donation for their B Conference meet. If anybody's willing to make that in a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Zizmierski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Next, uh, this coming Saturday, Wood Dale VFW, Saturday, Saturday, July 21st, spaghetti and meatball dinner, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, $7 per plate, includes salad, bread, and dessert. And on August 7th, Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:00 to 9:00, it's National Night Out. Police, sponsored by the Police Department, City. And then I have a written, received this email today. Dear Mayor and City Council, it's come to our attention about to repeal the banning legal gambling in Wood Dale. Please do not repeal the law. Basically, they don't like the gambling. They also ask if we should, if we would go to referendum. And then, uh, she apologizes for the late email, but just came to our attention. Her name is Kathy Anar Martinez. And that takes care of communications. Under Mayor's report, Homes for a Changing Region. Okay, Homes for a Changing Region, that's a CMAP program. It's the Chicago Metropolitan Planning Agency. This is a free grant. It's going to be Addison, Bensonville, and Villa Park, along with Wood Dale, are applying for this grant. It's a free grant. I believe everybody has the packet. We're looking for a motion to move forward so we can sign the agreement.
I was snicking it.
Any, any questions? Right, it's federal money. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Zizmierski?
Yes.
E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Next item is the Bussy Woods Reservoir, update and request for funds. Basically, this is Bussy Woods again. The DuPage County is now in the mix. The first study, from what we heard from our engineers, was eight, eight out of, if they do what they were saying, eight out of the last 10 floods in Elk Grove were taken care of, but Wood Dale was never mentioned. So naturally, we kind of backed away from that, as you recall. Now, DuPage County has asked for more in-depth study and water modules. And basically, they are looking for seven, uh, and not to exceed amount $7,500 for Wood Dale to be involved in this study. Do I have a motion before I ask for questions?
I'll second to put on the table.
Make a motion? Make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mike motion, second?
We got three people here.
Okay.
Take your pick.
All right. Joe, first question, Alderman Roy, Eugene Wesley.
My question is, Mr. Mayor, obviously the first study we did onboard with them, we thought it was going to benefit us in somewhat shape or form. Far I'm concerned, and I addressed my opinion on this before, I don't know why we would get into another study in the second phase when they're going to come back possibly tell me, we still ain't going to get any benefit for this thing. So it, it's, it's like throwing money away for this because it seems like my, this got Elk Grove written all over it. It, it really does because that study that came back, you even said tonight, 8% of that, or eight of those things are going to benefit Elk Grove. They ain't benefiting us. I was onboard to go for first phase of the study to see if it would benefit us. But when we got that study back and it showed that it did not benefit at, at all, I'd rather put some money in our committee here and do something with the flooding in our area than throw another $700, another $7,000 at a project that I don't think is going to benefit us after this study. So my vote will be no for this and I hope the council look at that.
And to respond to that, basically before the county was not involved, Tony Charlton, who's the Director of Stormwater Management, has asked, and in the report it says, they've asked for specific reports, which I don't remember the initials right off the top of my head, but basically what it said is they might open up the floodgates at the reservoir earlier. Right, might. Alderman Coles?
You gotta remember, Eugene, that they have a new person that's head of Cook County Park, Park District, who's, she is quite a woman. And she wasn't there, uh, when we had the study on it. So, I mean, she, she is doing things now that wasn't done before. So, uh, remember, remember things have changed in the, in the system in the park district in, uh, um, the Cook County. That's all I gotta say.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, I guess this question's to the manager. Has our engineer gone to the, uh, to the stormwater over there to find out actually how far we're going to go into this report and what's it's going to come out?
Mr. Manager?
It's my understanding that we have been going to all these meetings, we've had representation. I've been to a couple of the meetings as well. I'll be honest, I'm not too crazy about the concept, but it, it could work. Um, I do think we should investigate this. I mean, for the amount of money we're talking about and the amount of damage that happens in our town from flooding, this is, uh, not a large amount of money to get a potential large benefit from.
So in your opinion, as city manager, you're saying that we should do this?
For the amount of money we're talking, absolutely.
Okay. Do we have a motion to?
We have a motion and a second. Mike motion, Joe second. Alderman Lazara?
Has any other, uh, town or city committed to this yet or are we the first ones to?
That I do not know at this point. Ross, would you, Mr. Forrest might know, but he's not here. You. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I echo Alderman Wesley's sentiment that I don't like it, but this is a case of that area affects us greatly and we really need to, for this minimal amount of money, keep a seat at the table, just in case we do get, or at least have a, a say in getting some benefit. Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
My question is, they said they will open the gates earlier. You know how many times we sat up here and asked the county to open up those gates several times earlier? $7,500, how much further are we going to go in? If, if we go ahead and move forward the study for $7,500 and they come back and say it ain't going to benefit us, are we going to jump in the sack and do another $7,000 to go further in study three? I guarantee you with this money, there's another study after this, I guarantee. Mark my words, they're, they're coming back for more money for this project. And when do we decide to bail out? That's my concern. And I, believe me, I think we could do something else in our ward to benefit, or in the city, to benefit the flooding issue, then get a hold of county and tell them to open up that reservoir sooner. The point is to, to spend more money on this project and I guarantee you, there's going to be another money sent on this. And how far are we going to go with it, guys?
Mr. Manager?
I just want to clarify, it's, uh, 4688 if everybody participates, worst case scenario, 7,500. And the problem is, we've had the county out here before and they want data, they want numbers, they want this stuff. They're just not going to open up the gates because Wood Dale residents say, oh, we think it, uh, falls better when you open it up earlier. They're going to want some, some data on that and, and this is helpful to, to, to get there.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, as everyone knows, that the Forest Preserve is looking at to do some things at the golf course at Oak Meadows, it's been in the paper over there. Probably I can't get an answer on this. Mr. Manager, is, is, do you know if the county is working with the Forest Preserve on this project for flooding situation?
Cook County Forest Preserve?
No, DuPage County Forest Preserve.
And, I'm sorry, I was.
Not at, not just at the golf course, but they're asking for $7,800 for the flooding situation.
Mm-hmm.
We have the Forest Preserves that go right through the creek here and stuff that would help Wood Dale. Is, is the county working with the Forest Preserve on this project or are they doing this project by themselves?
I don't know, Pat, SOC meetings, have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, the county is, and the Forest Preserve are involved. It's a regional problem, obviously. Uh, and as the manager indicated, there is a, uh, at times they've talked about the, um, Elmer Chicago Stone Quarry, former quarry that the county's acquired. Uh, it, because it is a regional, they're trying to figure out where to put the water without causing flooding downstream. That's one of the reasons for the Bussy Woods study was to see what impact it would have. That data, as I understand, because the county's been involved in that process from the start and they become, they've stepped up their, their commitment and participation here recently. And they want to find out if that study yields any data that would support the fact that if they. that if they, if they take care of that, it's not going to create additional flooding upstream, and it's going to alleviate some of the flooding downstream. But it has been a coordinated effort. I know the county that is working with the Forest Reserve in DuPage County, as well as Cook County, to try and resolve the regional problem. And as Alderman Coles indicated, you do have a different leadership now at the Cook County Forest Reserve. This was an issue that was dead. They weren't doing any further study. There were some of the options that were available, that the experts, the engineers, said would work. The Cook County Forest Reserve put the kibosh on it, said, "We're not even going to consider those." Those are now going to be back on the table, provided this study gives them the data they need to make that determination. But it is a coordinated effort, and all those agencies are involved.
Okay. Is, do we have the motion to accept?
We have the motion to approve roll call. In a second.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? You go.
Yes, bud. Keep in mind-
Yes.
That passes.
Keep in mind, next bill comes, watch.
Next, City Managers' Report.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, movies in the park, farmer's market, July 21st, July 28th, August 4th, all Saturdays, leading up to our annual Prairie Fest, August 9th through the 12th, with fireworks on the 11th. And discounted carnival passes are available now at the park district, and at the city, and online.
Thank you. Next, Consent Agenda. We have 13 items on the consent agenda. If no objections, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Do we have any objections? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement agreement for the construction and maintenance of a water main in a portion of the Salt Creek Forest Reserve. Item number two, an ordinance approving the execution of a development agreement with Wood Dale Memory Care LLC for redevelopment of the re-subdivision of Lot 1 of Wood Dale Station. Item number three, an ordinance approving a planned unit development, special use for property commonly known as 276 East Irving Park Road. Item number four, an ordinance granting approval of the final plat of re-subdivision of Lot 1 of Wood Dale Station. Item number five, approval to purchase Microsoft 2010 upgrade. Item number six, approval to purchase fiber optic network switch upgrade. Item number seven, approval for work order to Baxter and Woodman, and not to exceed amount of $95,000 for the Royal Oaks subdivision preliminary design engineering. Item number eight, a resolution seeking to approve a contract award to ALAM Concrete Contract Incorporated for the Addison Road Water Main Phase 2 Construction. Item number nine, a resolution seeking to approve a contract award to RJN Group Incorporated for the Addison Road Water Main Phase 2 Construction. Item number 10, approval for pay request number two, partial maximum construction corp for the North wastewater treatment plant upgrades Phase 1A, and the not to exceed amount of $280,184.45. Item number 11, approval for pay request number two, partial 2013 water main replacement project to MQ Construction, and the not to exceed amount of $356,108.69. Item number 12, approval for payment, pay request number two, final Wood Dale Road ornamental streetlight project to Elmond and Nelson, and not to exceed amount of $291,682.45. Item number 13, approval for pay request number one, partial metro lot improvements project to RW Dunhaman, and not to exceed amount of $216,236.90. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
That passes. Next, Committee Chairman, Planning and Zoning, Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I discuss the first item, which is the sign amortization schedule, item that I would like to state that I have had several conversations with city council members today to discuss the parameters and issues with the current sign code. I believe there is a consensus to extend the amortization schedule, and also, it is very clear to me that council wants to work together with the business community to proactively look at how to improve the appearance of the signs by looking at the existing signs and the upkeep of them, as well as consideration of incentives to see the change come sooner rather than later. With that being said, the first step to this process would be to, I'm going to read the motion and the affirmative, and what we need to do is, if you're looking to discuss this at committee and extend the amortization, and look at ways of implementation, then we would vote no for the item, and that would take it off the table. And then, we will look to have discussion on the changes at a committee meeting. So, with that being said, I'm going to read the motion and the affirmative, and then, at that point, if citizens do wish to speak, we are looking to hear that. But I do want to state that I have had several conversations today with city council, and it's my understanding that we're looking to go back and look at different parameters, and look at how better to implement. So, with that being said, I'm going to make the motion and the affirmative, and then, doing it in that process to take this off the table, so then we can make an additional motion to discuss at committee.
Second.
Okay, so, I made my motion in the affirmative. There is a second. Anything on the question, Mr. Bond?
No, and one of the reasons that you can't implement, what you're doing is changing. The committee recommendation came forward. You've got an approval. You do have to make it in the affirmative, as Alderman Winger indicated, but to the extent you're going to do something different, that has to be under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, has to be specifically listed, and you'll need to implement whatever conditions you want to, or other provisions of the extension of the amortization period. That would be an appropriate matter to be handled at the committee meeting. And then, from the committee, you would make a direction to the attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance incorporating those conditions and restrictions, and that will come back to you as a city council at a future meeting, and it would be listed on the agenda then.
So, there's a motion, a second. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, we have somebody who'd like to speak on the signs.
Okay.
Ms. Cop? And anybody else who wants to speak on this matter, now's your opportunity.
I appreciate this opportunity to address this situation, since citizens generally don't get to speak at the committee level. So, that's why I'm here tonight. You, most of you know me. I'm Dolores Cop, 261 Forest View, Wood Dale, Illinois. I'm president of the Wood Dale Homeowners Association. I've been a resident of Wood Dale for 1990. I've served on the zoning board of appeals, and I'm on the stormwater committee. I am greatly concerned about this. I was on the zoning board and plan commission when this was put into, implemented. I voted for it. It is a good idea. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. Monument signs are implemented in other cities. They were generally implemented during times when we were not in a recession. It's been the worst recession since the Great Depression. And that is what our business people here in Wood Dale, that are paying their sales tax to help support Wood Dale, they're fighting for their lives right now. This recession is going deeper and deeper. And when you do reconsider this, I hope you consider a lengthly extension on this, because these people are fighting for their lives. They're trying to keep their businesses open and keep their people employed. So, kindly consider that they don't have the extra $10,000, $15,000 to take down a sign and put up a monument sign now, or in the near foreseeable future. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a quick comment. I get the feeling we're going to vote no on this. Wait, wait.